The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute.
Good Thursday morning, everyone. I now call the August 8th, 2024 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause with us for a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. I'll now read our Board Commitment Statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. I'll now ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules for this public work session. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniformed meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Good morning, Ms. Martinez. Would you please provide the proof of today's meeting?
Good morning, Madam Chair. The notice for the August 8th, 2024 work session was published in the Ocala Gazette on July 26th, 2024. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Docs under Proof of Publication.
Thank you, ma'am. And we'll now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Very nice to see you all again today. We've had a busy week welcoming everyone back, the rest of our staff back. We, of course, have school up and running from Y Mina Park this last few weeks, but looking forward to having our students return on Monday. I also want to do something, she doesn't know I'm going to do this, but Yamalie Gonzalez is our new communications manager. Some of you met her last night. We had a great celebration kickoff with our teachers, and we are just pleased to have her here. She's here this morning, and pleased to have her here as part of the team. So, looking forward to great things ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, welcome. Glad to have you. Before we get started, I just wanted to get the Board's input. This is a very robust work session, over 100 slides. So, I would just encourage any Board member that needs to take a stretch break to go ahead and do so, as long as we still have a quorum up here as we move along. And then, when it gets to what feels like a natural stopping point, we can take a break for about 20 minutes, at least, you know, get some lunch, and then get right back at it. So, that sounds good to the rest of the Board?
We're going through lunch? I didn't think it was going to take that long, but yeah, that's what we need.
Reese is going to talk fast.
It may not. It may not. It may not. And so, we'll see how it goes. All right.
All right. Wonderful. Ready? So, without further delay, we'll bring Ms. Boston Ellis forward, and we do have a very robust presentation today, and just appreciate Ms. Boston Ellis and her entire team for all the work that you see that went into today. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Thrower, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett. It is a pleasure being here today. This is getting closer to the final budget being approved, so we're all excited. I have some of the team members here today. Some are back at their desk working, but I just want to, again, publicly thank them for all the work that has been done. Yes, there are over 100 slides, but I will go through as fast and expeditious as I can, and but making sure that I address all of the questions and concerns that you may have. We may not have the answer today, but we will get it back to you next Thursday and present those answers to any questions you may have at that time before we start the next work session. In the, just to be transparent, when this presentation was uploaded last Thursday, since then, we have found some pages that needed corrections. So, you have the corrected PowerPoint. The corrected PowerPoint is up on the screen, but after the work session, we will upload the revised document so that public can have access to that. But you have the latest document in front of you, as well as the slide presentation.
Out of the press?
Yes.
Thank you.
Literally.
Still warm.
Okay. So, as we do every year, we try to put things in perspective and put them in the order that we think you should have. So, our topics today will be all fund summary, and we will talk a little bit more about the property values and millage rate and the historical perspective of that, as well as our FEFP, or our Florida Education Finance Program. But we will hone in on the general fund operating, general fund adult education, and the general fund referendum, and we'll close out looking at some historical data. You do have what we call handouts, attachments as well, and I will reference those as we go along through the presentation. So, this particular slide you may remember from last week. This is our total budget, $1.3 billion. But again, today, we will focus on the general fund operating, the adult education program, and the referendum, and that portion of our total budget is about $622 million. Again, our total budget is about $364 million, more than the prior year adopted budget, and we will continue to emphasize the majority of that increase is due to the bond, the certificate of participations that we had from last year. So, this is carrying over the funds that we borrowed from last year. Bring your attention to the truth and millage timeline, and that is what we are required to follow in order to receive state and local funds. The red circles indicate the processes that we have completed, and just to keep us on schedule, we try to present this information for you. Here is a historical perspective for our property values, as well as the millage rates, and you also have a handout. We provide that every year. It's called Historical Millage, and that goes back to 1999 through the present year. So, that should be a handout that you have. I think it says Slides 7, 8, and 9 on it. What I would like to point out to you here is our property values continue to increase, and you may notice on the attachment or the handout, there was a period in time where our property values were increasing like they are doing now, and we want to always keep our eye on that because sometimes that's an indication of what's going on in our economy. At the time, when it happened before, it was right before recession, and not that I'm indicating that we're going to have a recession, but the property values are ballooning in not only our state, but our local community. A lot of that has to do with the growth in our community, but we need to always be conscious of what's happening. Is everybody able to find that handout?
Yes.
Have it? Okay.
It's behind tab. Well, we're looking at behind tab 3.
It's just the historical data.
Yeah. This slide right here. Is this the slide that's on the screen? That's what you're referencing?
No. There's a handout.
Okay, maybe not. Six, the first one.
Can you say that again?
Oh, tab 6. Sorry. You're right, on the handout, tab 6. Thank you.
Looks like this.
Got it.
You probably wouldn't be able to see this if we put this on the slide. But if you look, say, on the, I guess, the third year, beginning 2007, '08, you will notice our property values were continuing to increase, and then the same for '08, '09, and then in the year 2009, '10, our property values started to plummet, and that's when we had that economic crisis in the United States, as well as our community. But I always like to point that out because a lot of times, people look around and say, "How did that happen?" But we just need to be conscious of property value increases because it's indicative of the funding that we would receive from the local taxpayers. So, we'll review the millage levies again. We have an 11.7% increase over the last year's post-value adjustment board. That is on Slide 7. And so, that 11.7% increase is going to increase our revenue, but we'll first look at the millage. So, the required local millage actually decreased, and just a reminder, that is set by our legislative bodies, the required local effort millage. That's set. There's nothing that we can do about that millage. The rest of the millages, as you can see, are discretionary, set by the local board. Discretionary operating is the same as last year. The local capital improvement, that's the 1.5 mil. Legislators always, they set that as well. That's the highest it could be. Of course, the voter-approved millage, that's what we use for the referendum. So, our total millage for '24, '25 is 6.323 mils, and again, it's reflective of a .116 decrease, but that's all attributed to the required local effort millage.
Ms. Boston Ellis, I get a lot of questions about this in the community, and so, just to make sure that we're really explaining this, what I'm seeing on this Slide 7 is that our property values, Marion County property values, increased almost 12%, 11.7%, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But the required local effort and would that be the rollback rate?
No.
No.
The required local effort millage is set by our legislative body. We go through that rollback rate as information to the public. It's not handled like a county or another municipality. They set that millage based on appropriations and other things that they take into effect. So, it has really nothing to do with the rollback rate. The rollback rate basically says, if we levy or we get the same money that we got the prior year, what would the millage look like? So, we go through that in order to determine when or whether or not we advertise for a tax increase. So, it really doesn't have anything to do with the rollback rate, but we do use the rollback rate in order to determine whether or not we just say we're having a regular hearing or we're having a hearing due to a tax increase.
Understood. And so, the, because it looks like, oh, you know, we got almost a 12% increase in funding through the increase in the property values, but the effective increase for us, it would be nice to have that number, to be able to share in the community. No, you know, even though property values went up almost 12%, that didn't directly come to us as an almost 12% raise, so to speak, right?
There is a calculation which is on the next slide.
Perfect.
Which tells you exactly the impact to Marion County.
Okay. Because that's important. It just seems like there's a lot of question, you know, in the community that maybe I'm not the only one that gets that question. You know, property rates keep going up so much, you know, what are we doing with all that, that money? So, looking forward to this next slide.
Chair, may I ask?
Yes.
Ms. Boston Ellis, just for clarification, so obviously, we understand that the legislature sets the first line. I'm back on Slide 7.
Correct.
The legislature sets the first line. Prior year adjustment, I mean, that's kind of a part of that as well.
Correct.
The discretionary operating, that is essentially up to this board to say what we want to levy there?
Right. The maximum you could levy is the .748 mils. The caveat with that is if you decrease that, then we'll lose some state revenue. So, if you levy that full .748 mils, we will receive about $14 million additional dollars from the state.
Okay. And that's the clarification I was hoping for. So, whereas we do get lots of questions about why, why, why? Well, the reason we have to do it is in order to fully participate in the FEFP and to fully receive the funds that the state allocates for public education. This is what we are essentially required to levy, even though we could adjust it if we wanted to, but it changes the entire formula on what we actually would then receive. And we, I'm not even going to talk about capital. We've talked about that 1.5 enough. So, we certainly could change that down if we wanted, but we're not going to talk about that. And then, obviously, our voters voted in the one. So, that just helps further clarify, if anybody in the community is listening, I know I'm receiving lots of questions right now about this, and a lot of folks who have moved to Florida from out of the state, my candid response is always that public education is funded out of property taxes in the state of Florida.
Correct.
That's the way it is. So, if you want that to change, you need to advocate with your legislature to come up with additional funding sources because at this juncture, that, it is what it is. And so, while this School Board would have the ability to potentially adjust down if we wanted to, and it is adjusted down minimally, it ultimately does not give us the full participation in Florida's education funding mechanism.
At the very minimum, we would have to levy, or you would have to levy, the required local effort in order to receive state dollars. So, that is the very minimum. You would have to levy that. And we get calls too, and that's how we explain to them, and, you know, we get calls like, "I don't have kids in the system," and we tell them the same thing. That is a constitutional amendment, and as you said, Dr. Camel, that is what we are required to do in order to receive state funding. And I think for us, the state funding was like $245 million. So, in order for us to receive those dollars, we would have to levy that required local millage. And that's why they call the rest of them discretionary because you could, as you stated, not levy them, but we based our budget on using all of these.
No, absolutely. Completely concur. It's helpful for the community to understand, if we were to adjust down, even in the discretionary areas, it actually doesn't just reduce the amount, it also reduces the amount we're able to, that the state gives additional, like, bonus dollars or something if you actually do what you're, I mean, I'm using very generic terms here, but in order to actually receive everything that we can from the state for education finance, we have to keep it at these rates. Okay?
Ms. Boston Ellis and Dr. Camel just said something that kind of dropped my mind when people are asking that same question about how education is funded, and Dr. Camel, thank you, you said it's through property taxes and not the Florida Lottery. Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
We have one little slide about the Florida Lottery at the very end.
I'm sure it's very short.
Very short.
Very short.
Thank you.
And a lot of times, we get calls from people who've moved from up north, and I will ask them the question, "How do you fund education?" Or, "What are your taxes?" And they have transit taxes, they have burrow taxes, they have a lot of different taxes, and that's the explanation I give to them. Well, Florida funds education through property taxes. So, yes.
Thank you. I really appreciate that background because, you know, the word discretionary is a tiny bit misleading because discretionary with severe consequences in parentheses maybe would be more accurate.
Yes.
Thanks.
So, to answer your question, even though the millage was reduced, the property values increased a lot more than the millage was reduced. So, we do have a reduction in the millage, but we're still getting additional funding through our local taxes. And if you look under the column 2024, 2025, and go down to by state law, the millage for the '24, '25 year would be $114.8 million, and that is an increase over the prior years to the tune of $8.1 million. Again, you're looking at that relationship between the property values increasing and the reduction in the required local effort. Because the other millages are not changed from year to year, you will see an increase in the revenue generated. So, the next, by local board, the 2024 revenue, millage revenue, is $83.9 million. That also represents an $8 million increase. And then, of course, the referendum, that is the 1 mil, and that is $37.3 million. And so, the increase from the prior year is a total of $3.9 million. So, because of our property values, in spite of the reduction of the required local effort, there is an increase in local revenue to the tune of $20 million. I hope that's clear.
That's perfect. Thank you.
So, the general fund will receive $180 million of that total $236 million, and then the capital will receive $56 million of that total $236 million. So then, let's look at how it impacts the tax or the property owner. We have two examples, and you're, I'm sure, familiar with these examples. If there was no increase in assessed value, there would be a reduction in what our property owners would pay. And so, we'd just like to show that there would be a reduction of $37.70. But the next slide is the reality. You're all familiar with the Save Our Homes, and I believe there's a handout in that as well. It's behind Tab 6, and it should say, "Save Our Homes" at the top. And again, what Florida statute says is that you can only adjust the property value of a property owner, either it has to be the CPI change in a year or 3%, so whatever is the lowest. And our CPI for 2024 is 3.4%. What we are using in this example is the lower of the two, and that is 3%. And that's just for your edification as to how Save Our Homes impacts what property owners pay. So, in this example, on Slide 10, we are reflecting an increase of 3%. So now, instead of $350,000, the property value is $360,500. We reduce it by the homestead exemption, and as you can see, the taxes are calculated, and this would be an increase. And it is an increase because the Save Our Homes allows up to a 3% property value. So, I think a few years back, well, I know a few years back, this was legislated so that you didn't see property values that are used in taxation being doubled and tripled over the years. So, this law came into effect to, I guess, equalize what's going on in the community in terms of the Consumer Price Index versus that 3%. So, it's always the lower of the two. So, this particular example does show an increase in what a taxpayer would pay, to the tune of $28.69.
For the whole year?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. And Chair.
Go ahead. And Ms. Boston Ellis, the people that this slide really impacts are the people that may have just moved into their homes with a new assessed value, and, you know, they haven't had the homestead and all of those things. The people that have just moved here, their first tax bill is based on the current value, those are the people I'm sure that we're hearing from more than anybody else. Because anybody else who has been living in their home for an extended period of time, while their property value continues to increase, their taxable rate isn't increasing more than 3% a year.
Correct.
And so, I think that's another piece. Again, we're certainly hearing the folks who are struggling and stressing about, "Why are my taxes so high?" And a lot of times, it's because of the assessed value when they moved into that new home or existing home, whereas if they've been there for a while, they may only be experiencing a minimal increase. It still feels like a lot, certainly, but the increase isn't nearly as vast.
And with the property bills, you'll also see your county and other taxes. So, a lot of times, what I do is ask them to pull out your tax bill, and let's go through it, and I'll show them, "This is for the school, this is for the county," you know, "all the different municipalities that they are a part of," because it is confusing if you don't look at that all the time. You're exactly right. So, if you're brand new, the assessed value is what it is. If you have a homestead exemption, that reduces it. School boards only have the $25,000 exemption. The county has another exemption. So, that is confusing too to them as well. You know, why isn't it $50,000 versus $25,000?
Thank you.
I know I promised to expedite. Sorry.
I wish we could cap homeowner's insurance at 3% a year.
We don't control that. We don't control that. Okay. So we've talked a little bit about this Florida education finance program, and just want to remind you and remind our taxpayers that this is a constitutional amendment that we fund education. And this was created in 1973, the Florida Finance Program. And it, the, the, the opportunity or what they were trying to do is equalize funding. So whether you live in the Panhandle or you live in Key West, the, the idea is to equalize the funding. So someone who lives on the coast, they may pay more local taxes. So the state requires them to subsidize more of, of their revenue. And then you have counties like, like us, where we're sort of landlocked. There's more of an equal distribution between the local and the state taxes. But just remind everybody that this particular funding mechanism is, if you would, it's, we look at it five times a year. So, and this is our primary focus or our primary mechanism for funding education in Florida. So, so we call them counts. They take a picture in July of the student counts, they take a picture in October, another one in February, another one in May, and then they do a final in the next year, sometimes around September or October. But our major, I would say, the major looks are the October and the February count. So that's when we really want our schools to have the, as they say, cheeks in the seats so that we maximize the funding that we are really eligible for. The components, again, you're familiar with, the full-time equivalent, basically the students, and it's adjusted for the type of program they're in. And then that becomes the weighted FTE. So you take FTE times program cost factors, and we'll look at these a little bit more detail in a minute. And then you have your base student allocation, you multiply that. And now we have something called a comparable wage factor that's multiplied, and then any other adjustments that the state requires. So most every year, there's a proration, so they appropriate so many millions of dollars. And then they allocate the funds. And if the allocation is higher than the appropriation, then we come back and we get a proration. So they reduce the allocation. So the total proration for the state of Florida was 23.8 million. So that's a reduction to the allocated funds. And for our district, it was a reduction of 385,000. This is this fun formula, and we won't stay on this very long, but I want to bring your attention to the, I think it's the fourth line where it talks about state-funded discretionary supplement. We do not receive those dollars unless they're estimate for family empowerment scholarship. If their estimate is less than what we actually have to provide to the family empowerment scholarship, then they will allocate those dollars to us. So it's just like a little holding account in case their estimate for family empowerment is over.
Sorry, getting back to the state-funded discretionary supplement, that over $7 million is sitting there and it's reflected in our, excuse me, in our budget.
Yes.
But in, with that particular box, we're a pass-through essentially, right?
We never see that money, we never see the family empowerment. But because the family empowerment scholarships' dollar amounts, we used to be able to estimate what that might be, all school districts. But because they're growing exponentially, it's hard to estimate. So this is the way our legislators are saying, we'll put this money aside in case you need it, which is really good because it's very difficult to estimate what the number of students that are going to take advantage of those scholarships.
And so if, if less than $7 million worth of students take advantage of it, then that money then goes back to the state, or does it get to, or do we get to spend it on something?
No, no. And it's not 7 million. Right now, we have an estimate for, I think it's 39 million for family empowerment revenue. And we have to budget to offset what we think is going to be used. But what they are saying is the estimate that they gave us, which is 39 million, if they actually pay out more than that, then they will release some of these dollars to help us. But this is really just a picture of what's available to us if it's needed.
Got it, thank you.
So you're familiar with unweighted FTE. Again, because we are growing not only traditional schools, but also in family empowerment, we are, we are showing an increase in unweighted FTE. And that's important because that's the basis of how we get funding. So you'll see our, our estimate funding, our estimated unweighted FTE for 24, 25 is at $50,311.97. But what, what I'll point out to you, that is an increase of 2181.08 FTE. The FES increase is 1,061. The MCPS, traditional student, that increase is 1,119. So of that 2 or 2100 estimated FTE increase, about half of it is FES and a half of it is traditional schools. Again, program cost factors. Our folks in DOE look, look at expenditures for all districts from the prior year, and they look at how much these programs cost. I think what I want to point out here is that, I don't know if you recall, the CTE program was basically the same funding as the 912. But we see that that is actually going up, which is a good thing because the CTE programs are very expensive. You're buying equipment and providing licensing, so that equipment is very expensive. So this is good to see that number increasing because for a while, it was the same as the basic funding for 912. That's what I wanted to point out there. Again, we looked at weighted FTE, and that's the unweighted FTE times the program cost factor. I want to point out to you also, in the weighted FTE, there are some add-ins or add-ons for our magnet programs based on them passing tests. So they, we received 1,164 additional weighted FTE for those programs such as AP, ACE, the CTE programs, dual enrollment. And those funds have to be allocated back to the schools. And there is restrictions for each of the different types of funds. So this is also a positive thing. So those programs that, that they, the teachers receive bonuses, they, they're able to do additional things. It helps pay for the expensive tests that are required in some of the programs. So this is a really positive thing for us as a school district, and it means additional dollars for the school district.
So based on that calculation, Ms. Bossenellis, about a fifth of our students are a part of some kind of magnet program that are?
That we received additional funding for. Because they passed the test or some other requirement of that program.
Thank you.
And Chair Mayor Soffer, going back to the conversations we've had about supplements for teachers teaching with zero period, the money for zero period on campuses would come from this weighted FTE money that gets filtered to the school site?
That's what Bellevue High does. They use their additional funding for their ACE program, and they use it to create what you're referring to as a zero period, where kids voluntarily come in and have classes before school starts.
That's the only school that does that?
That I am aware of. Do you know of anybody else?
Okay, cool, thank you.
So the base student allocation, it is an increase of $191 from the prior year. But what I want to point out to you, this is, you may recall last year, there were some categories that were rolled into the base student allocation, and they used to be categorical dollars. So the teacher supply money, the classroom teacher, and other instructional person. So that's that teacher salary increase. Also, the reading program, FEFP. So, and then, I think that's it, and instructional materials. Those programs were rolled into the base student allocation. But there is still a requirement that we have to keep records showing how much we spent on those, on those programs. And we do that. But it sort of camouflages the increase. And that's sometimes what happens with categorical dollars. There'll be a standalone, and then they eventually get rolled into the base student allocation as well. But for your information, we have continued to allocate what they received a couple of years ago when we knew the exact amount. But we don't have to do that. But those programs are important, and we continue to allocate the same dollar. I believe in 24, 25, it's, it was $300 per teacher for the classroom supplies.
So Ms. Bossenellis, based on what you said, it appears that we might have a deregulation idea for our legislative session upcoming because we could request that when a categorical is collapsed, that we no longer have to report the allocations given to that prior categorical. That would be a significant deregulation, in my opinion, that would help your team to not have to nitpick like we used to have to when the categorical exists. Would you agree with that?
That would be, I think it would be helpful.
Okay. I, I mean, that seems like a pretty logical request. When we think of deregulation, that's something the legislature has been focused on the past session or two, and we didn't have anything on our platform. That just feels like something that maybe we could talk about with our FSBA peers around the state. But as they collapse categoricals, it continues to be regulated that we have to then still show them how much we allocate for each of those prior existing categoricals. And that's just, that's more work than it needs to be.
That would be great, but I always think about, people ask questions about how much, how much are you allocating for this? How much are you allocating for that? So, and that's why we continue to keep it in the projects because, because they do come back and ask you. I, I think the reading program that you approved a few months ago, it asked, how much money are we allocating to reading? So we know what we did here, and then the curriculum area, they were able to identify other expenditures, so.
So the line item would still exist. I mean, we would still know what that is from a line item perspective, but from an actual reporting, just removing that reporting step is what I'm, I'm saying from a deregulation standpoint. That would be a
Yes.
huge step in the right direction. Additionally, if they intend, and who knows what the direction will be this next session, but if they intend to continue to collapse categoricals, or if that continues to be a conversation, if that then is tied to that change, to the FEFP, that the reporting has, can go away. I mean, that, just trying to
It would be helpful, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. But I just wanted to show you that even though it's saying there's an increase in it, and a lot of the increase has to do with number of students and programs too. So while we are excited for an increase in the BSA, because I remember one year when, and some of you may remember, it was like $7. That was an increase to the BSA, which, which, which was pretty rough for us as school district folks. Also, even though they rolled the student or the teacher's salary increase into the BSA, we still have to report that. And that is a very detailed report, and Thomas really just loves that report because they give us a category for maintaining the raises from the prior year, and then they say new money. And I, I think there was a discussion with you that talked about, there was 200 and some odd million dollars allocated. But when you peeled all of that back, our new money is only $3 million to, to pay for that. So that makes it conflicting as well because they're telling us, this is what you should spend on these items, but we're rolling them into the BSA.
Right. And so what I would like to know is what is the real number of the base student allocation?
We would too.
And you mentioned camouflaging, but I think that's, you know, we either need to be having it all rolled together or have it stay separated out so the public can truly see and, and follow. Because again, what we hear from the community was, you're getting almost $200, you know, per student more this go-round. And then you're put in the position saying, well, not really.
Right.
And then, and so then the suspicion begins because it doesn't look transparent. It, it looks camouflaged, which it is. And this could be a number for, you know, a follow-up meeting. But again, I would really like to know, what is the true number? What's the true base student allocation?
You mean stripping away all of those additional items?
Right.
We could probably try. But there's some things we don't know, like the formulary, we may not be, but we could, we could, we could take a look at that.
Right. Don't put too much
You're up for the challenge.
But, but because that's a great number, you know, that looks very robust.
Last year was over $500 increase, and people were saying the same thing. Well, you're getting 500. Well, you didn't see that they rolled all these categoricals into the base student allocation. And I'm sure there's a reason why, and I don't want to come across as, I'm not grateful because I've been here when things were really bad. And this, this is a marked difference than what we used to have to deal with. But, but to me, that's important. It, it, you get in the weeds, and sometimes that may be even more confusing to people when we, we get, go too deep. But you're, you're exactly right. When, when the categoricals are rolled into the base student allocation, it creates a different picture.
Right, and it's somewhat murkier.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Another thing that they've done, you may remember the DCD, and that was basically the cost of living. So you would take all of those previous formulas and multiply it times the cost of living for Marion County. And ours, as you can see, were less than one for many, many years. But two years ago, there was a new formula. They said, we'll look at three years of your cost of living, come up with an average. If you're below one, we'll give you a wage factor of one. If you're above one, then you get to keep that. So you can imagine the Miami Dades, the Palm Beaches, the, the, the big districts, their cost of living is much higher than ours. So they'll maintain their cost of living, but this does help districts like ours where you were below, we were below one factor, and now we are one factor. And it sounds like, you know, it's not a lot, but it does make a difference when you're talking about millions of dollars. So let's look at our per pupil funding. And again, you can see that that has increased over the past 10 years. The 24, 25 state average is $8,982.79. As you can see, Marion County's average is $8,818.47. So we're about $164 below the state average in terms of our funding. So a lot of times when things are advertised, you know, student state average is $8,982, a lot of times our funding is, is less. So it's an average, some school districts are higher, some are lower.
Ms. Bossenellis, thank you for that. Because that ultimately goes back to, and this is something that those of us who were at the Finance Forum in Gainesville a few months ago, this was something that stood out whenever we were talking with other districts around the state because ultimately that average is what it is, and we're under that average. But it's basically because of that comparable wage factor. When you really delve into it, so those that are, I mean, we're always under, but Miami Dade, Jacksonville, you know, wherever, Orange County, they, they have this much larger percentage that they get to calculate into their formula. they, they have this much larger percentage that they get to calculate into their formula. And when we're below average for the state, then think of how, think of where the others are that are above average. And so, okay, thank you.
Very good point. So we will move on to the main funding source in general fund, which is the general fund operating. So looking at it from a summary process, the revenue source is 559 million, but that also includes a beginning fund balance of approximately 92 million. We're going to talk a little bit about fund balance a little bit further on. But what I'd like to point out to you is basically our local revenue is 157.8 million and the state revenue is estimated at 298 million. So even though the percentages look a little off, 28 versus 53, that's because we are including fund balance in this particular calculation. But in terms of dollars, 157 million is local, 298 is state. I think that's an important note to make. We'll go to the next slide, to slide 26, which has more detail about our revenue. The first one is our ROTC program. You'll see there's a slight decrease and you, you may be aware that we no longer have a program at Dunell and High. So that is reflected in that reduction of estimated revenue. Just as an FYI, I asked Thomas to tell me how much the general fund pays for these programs. And I think it was a tune of $1.5 million. And I know they do raise money in their internal accounts and they have additional programs as well. But in terms of the funds that we receive versus what we're actually paying out, which is for the most part salaries, it's, it's, it's about a million-dollar difference. The next item is Medicaid. You may be familiar, we do get additional funds based on the economics of our students. But we have to apply for those funds, there's forms to fill out. And for this current year, we had estimated about, or 23-24 estimated 1.5 million. And we're, we're thinking 1.9 million for 24-25. We're about a year behind, if you, if I use that word correctly, in submitting claim documents. So we believe as we catch up with that, we'll see, we'll see additional dollars. That helps us offset some of the ESC additional costs as well. So we look to them to be vigorous in, in filling out forms so that we can receive those additional funds. The National Forest Fund, saw it $200,000, but basically it's tree sales in the forest. The, we were looking at this and we're like, "Where's, where's our money?" Well, they send the check to the county and then the county reimburses us for our part of the proceeds. So hopefully by final, we'll have that, we'll have those dollars back. And then the, the last item that I wanted to bring to your attention was a miscellaneous federal through state. And that 82,000 that we received in 23-24 was basically some reimbursements from Hurricane Ian, Nicole and Elsa from the '22 and the '21 years.
We finally got the money, huh?
Some of it. We're glad for that. You're, you're exactly right, Raymond Cummins, because there's some times when we don't receive reimbursements for that. So on slide 27, that's looking, we're looking at the state revenue. And you'll see there is a estimated increase in, from budget to budget. Let's see, 17 million. And basically that's additional funds for base student allocation, additional staffing. That causes that estimated increase in our FEFP program. Let's see, the other one I wanted to bring to your attention was, let's see, the workforce development capital incentive. We've, we have that incentive. And we've since found out that that should have been recorded in our adult ed program. So that will be a change that you will see when we get to the final. And then class size, of course, increased because of a number of students. And then the school recognition, that's based on our school grade. So we don't amend that in until we actually find out how much our schools are going to earn from Florida school recognition dollars. I think that's it.
Ms. Bossenellis, on this slide, there, from budget to actual in 23-24, we're about 23 million less than what we had budgeted in FEFP. Do we know what that is?
That just means we probably had not received all the money. And there may be some adjustments in terms of, and I'll, I'll back up even further. Where it says FY 23-24, that was as of July 19th, when we had to stop recording expenditures in the 23-24 year so that we can begin the preparation for the 24-25.
Thank you.
And we, we typically go, "Okay, we need to, we need to do it today." No, we need these transactions recorded. So that's when we take a picture of what the year-end would be. And so when we bring back an explanation of changes in September, you'll see where fund balances may change. And that's because of expenditures that occur in July that are really attributable to the 23-24 year. And so we have to make those adjustments. So it could be a myriad of, of things. But I, I want to believe there may be some adjustments to some of the categoricals. We typically record all of it in one account. And at the end of the year, when we find out exactly how much we receive, then we start moving those dollars around. We look for that to be closer than what it is there, yes. We'll look at slide 28. The district school taxes, again, the change is because of property values increased. So that's about a $10 million, $10 million increase from budget to budget. Also, our interest, that's just a conservative estimate. Of course, you know, it depends on what the market is. As you can see, we had a conservative amount of 1.1 million of what we thought we would get in interest collection, and we ended up with 5.6 million. So it's, it's just our, our best guess based on our knowledge of what the market is doing. And then numbered, what I'm calling number three, miscellaneous local. That reduction, you may be aware, we are allowed to charge grants, what is called an indirect cost rate. The cost that's attributable to processing the payroll of the people that earn the grant or procurement for the grants. So there is a rate that is calculated and approved by DOE for us to use. And because the ESER funds are going away, we're going to see a decrease in that indirect cost rate. You have a question? Okay, we'll move on to slide 31. And this is just a snapshot of the changes from 23-24 adopted budget to the 24-25 tentative budget. And the expenditure is about 44.5 million more than the prior year adopted budget. There's an increase in salary benefits, purchase services, reduction in energy services, materials and supplies, capital outlay and other expenses. So let's look at each pie chart, starting with 32. You have two handouts behind six that should refer you to slide 32. It has the units for the general operating fund or the staff and also a compilation of expenditures. So the first tab has like a green heading and it says general fund 1,000. And sometimes board members have asked, you know, what staff is included in what object? So what Thomas has prepared for us here is a listing of all the staff that belong under object 1100, and that's basically your administrative type positions. So at the very top, it should say 199, 23-24. And our estimate tentative budget is 24-25 of 215. That's just for administrative. So this schedule goes on, looks at 1,200, which is our teachers. So this gives you sort of a synopsis of the type of positions within a particular object. The other schedule you have says at the top, general fund operating. And that looks at everything. Salary, benefits, purchase services, energy, materials and supplies, capital outlay and other expenses and transfers. But I'm going to take each category and go through them. So on slide 32, the 23-24 adopted budget, our salaries were 249.7 million. There is an increase for the 24-25 budget year of 200, excuse me, the total tentative budget, 262.9 million. So there is an increase in salaries. From a just general position, you may remember that we had maybe over 200 units, our staff that were recorded under the ESER program. And it was your request that we basically find a home for all of those staff that were moved, that were recorded under ESER. So we looked at the funding that's available for the grants. And of course, sort of what was not available that we could record under grants, it was recorded in the general fund. So there is an increase in salaries of about $12 million.
Chair, can I just say one thing? I just want to compliment the team for being able to make that happen. Because, and I've, we've talked about this before, but as we looked across the state of Florida, probably nationally too, but lots of school districts did massive layoffs because of the, the cliff of ESER money. And as a board and with the navigation of you and the team, we were able to figure it out so that no one got laid off. And in fact, I think we probably have added positions to meet, continue to meet students' needs and prioritize that. And so I know I was a big advocate of not cutting anything. And I am very grateful for the team for figuring out how to make it happen and prioritizing what our students need in our schools. Because the data supported that what we were doing with the ESER money was working and I didn't want to see us lose that. So I just wanted to compliment you guys because that, it's a lot of money to figure out how to find. So I'm grateful for that.
Thank you for amplifying that, Board Member James. It really was, you know, all of us that saw that and, and wanted to see it continue where in other counties, they, it was, they used a lot of ESER dollars to buy programs and then just, you know, cut the programs and cut the people that went along with them. And the fact that we were able to figure out how not to do that is, is a testament. And we're certainly hearing a lot of thank yous, you know, from our schools because we didn't make that happen and from individuals as well.
But I would also say that it's going to be a challenge going forward because these are recurring costs.
Recurring costs.
And that is the thing that keeps me up at night thinking about, you know, we've got two schools coming on next year. And I think before we end our presentation next week, I want to provide to you some projections of what it's going to cost to open those two elementary schools and then for the next year, the high schools. So I, I, you know, it's, it was a lot of hard work and it wasn't us because, you know, we were advocating three minus four is negative one. And the curriculum department really led that charge as to, you know, how can we use additional federal funds? But, but I think our challenge will come going forward. Again, because these are recurring costs. And we may have to make some decisions. We may need to look back at the, our staffing ratios and do, do the work now so that we don't end up having to do that. But Dr. Talbot Irving probably appreciates that comment, Dr. James, because we gave them, we gave them a good hard time about trying to, to balance the funding.
Our recruiting's going better as well. And, you know, we have a lot less unfilled positions currently than we've had in the past. But not having those positions filled that have been budgeted for have also helped us.
Yes, built fund balance.
Yes.
You're exactly right. We, we are, we are living off some of our savings from unfilled positions.
Right.
So yes, but again, we've got to look forward and say, you know, as we continue to grow, you know, what, what are some things we can give and take on to make sure that we don't put ourselves in that position again?
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you for kind of giving us a forecast of where we're going, at least giving us a preview of what we'll be talking about in our next meeting. Because when you're talking about keeping me up at night, I, I can feel that because we're going to have two new schools come online that have to be fully staffed and the money isn't changing. It's still the same number of students. So when you think about the, the revenue that we have coming in, yes, we're going to have these beautiful new facilities that absolutely we need. And so that's going to reduce down class sizes and, and space and all of that. But the money we receive is based on the number of students we have. And other than the maybe 500 to 1,000 students we might see differently, the, the money is essentially, it is what it is. So if we opened those schools today, this outlook would be a little bit bleak. It would look a lot different. And so while I am grateful that we were not, we didn't have a need to lay off people and we've enveloped the 251 positions that year over year now that we have in our fund, general fund, my hope is that some of these positions may actually be allocated to those new schools so that we won't have seriously an entire new startup school times two. So I, I hear you, Ms. Bossenellis, I really do. And I understand that we have to get really serious about what this looks like for us in next school year and start thinking about that now. So thank you for going to, that you're going to be bringing that to us next week because that is important.
Yeah, yes, we, we need to do that. On slide 34, it's basically the benefits. And Dr. Campbell brought it to our attention, the way we had it headed. And this is one of the changes that we made. It said board health, board life, workers comp. And that might have misled the public to think that this was something that was going to the board. And it's basically the district's cost. So we, we changed those headings to, to be more transparent and correct in what it is. But it is the board's portion. That's what you agreed to pay on behalf of our employees. So 23-24, 95.1 million. And for 24-25, a slight increase to 103.7 million. And again, this sheet tells you what's all in, in these numbers. We'll move on to slide 36. And that's purchase services. Last year, 69.4 million dollars. We're projecting an estimate of 89.2 million. What I want to point out to you, if you'll flip over to slide- What I want to point out to you, if you'll flip over to Slide 37, in what is called Object 3100, Professional Technical Services, that's where we record where we think our estimate for family empowerment is gonna be. So think about it. We have to record that revenue, so we need to have offset in expenditures for the family empowerment. Otherwise, we'll have this $30 million coming out of our budget, and we don't have an offset to it. So we record it there. Once they determine what that amount will be, then we remove it out of the, out of the, out of the budget. So, and the other...
What did you say, you recorded it? I'm sorry.
We, 3100.
Under the Professional?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Another large item in that particular category are our contracted services. And you have approved millions of dollars for contracted services for next year. And so those are recorded there for our therapists, for speech therapists, for physical therapists, all those outside services that are required for our students. Also, want to bring your attention to other purchase services. A new item for us this year is the contract for certified ESC teachers. So what we did is we reduced, for budgeting purposes, 40 ESC units, 40 ESC staff, and we recorded that dollar amount under Purchase Services, because we will be paying out of a contract. We'll be paying them for the services of them identifying and finding ESC teachers. So I hope that makes sense. But we felt like we would be double counting if we left the budget for the 40 ESC teachers, but did, did not adjust it because they are recorded in professional services. But the staffing is still there, in case anybody's wondering. The staff is there, we just adjusted the budget. We'll move on to Energy Services. The only thing that caught my eye there was the, on Slide 39, there is a reduction from budget to budget on diesel fuel. That may be correct, but again, we have, we have bills that come in through the month of July that are attributed to the 2324 year. So once we get those final bills, and we might have them already, we will have to adjust, we may have to adjust the budget for 2425. Not only for diesel fuel, but, you know, some of the other items as well. On handout...
Ms. Boston Ellis.
Oh, yes, sir.
This is reduction in Energy Services?
Yes. What we did is calculated an estimate based on the bills that we had paid through July. So that's why I'm saying we may have to increase that.
Got you, got you.
We hadn't come up with any great ideas about how to reduce diesel costs, or, I think we have more buses that are non-diesel now too, so, but we still have a few. On Slide 40, we're looking at Materials and Supplies. The prior year, 18, 8 million. 2425, 21.3 million. What I would like to point out to you on this slide, I think there was a question about textbooks. It appeared that they were going down, and non-consumables were increasing. And, and basically, what is happening is that percentage is different, that percentage is different because of the total dollar amount for materials and supplies. We'll move on to Slide 41. The first item, Materials and Supplies. We have encumbered POs, so that means we've encumbered the funds in the prior year. We didn't receive bills or things that are needed to pay. So some of our purchase orders, we carry them over so that when the bill comes, we can pay them. Let's see, under Consumables Supplies, that increase is due to ESER as well. During the times of ESER, we were able to allocate some custodial supplies expenses to ESER. So now these supplies are coming back as a expenditure to the General Fund. So that's why there's an increase there. And then numbered, let's see, Textbooks, we have a slight increase there because of the carryover. So remember, textbooks are categorical. If we don't spend them, we have to carry those dollars over as well. We also used ESER funds to pay for some of our new adoptions for textbooks as well. Think they did a really good job this year. It's about $9 million. And, and I think the, the issue they have is, once the adoption has been approved, it's usually like April, May, and then they're in a rush to get the books. So we just carry the funds over so we can pay for them out of the next year. Also, under Other Materials and Supplies, that is a, that increase is due largely to portables. I believe we have an estimate of 960,000 for portables, and the rest of that dollar amount is restricted resources for our categoricals. Capital Outlay, Slide 42. The adopted budget was 9.6 million. The tentative budget for 2425 is 10.2 million. It's a slight increase. Also want to point out, we use ESER funds to do a lot of technology purchases, and that is really gonna help us get ahead of the curve, I believe. And so next year, we'll probably be looking for the Board to approve refreshes. And when I say next year, I'm talking '26. We'll be looking for, for technology to be requesting additional mon, money to refresh. So on Slide 43, the only thing I want to bring to your attention is 6,400, where it says Furniture. It's really furniture and equipment. And these are, again, technology equipment that is being migrated back to the General Fund, where we had used ESER dollars to purchase them. And then we also have some categorical dollars that we had to roll over as well.
Ms. Boston Ellis.
Yes, sir.
So with the furniture and equipment...
Yes.
Is this increase taking into consideration the new schools that's gonna be coming online?
No, no, sir.
That's gonna be on...
These are items that we had, school infrastructure, that we had paid for out of the ESER funds. These are like yearly renewal costs, so they're coming back home.
Got you.
Slide 44, adopted budget from last year, 17.5 million. For other expenses and transfers, 2425, tentative budgets, 18.9. On Slide 45, the only thing that I want to point out to you here is miscellaneous expenditures are really, really where we record what, what we think are the estimated categoricals that we have to roll over to the next year. And then once that number is finalized, the schools or the departments let us know where to reallocate those funds. So this is sort of like a holding account for categoricals. And these are the ACE, the IB-type CAPE funds. So now let's talk about fund balance. Reminding all of us that the excess of our assets, of our liabilities, are fund balance. And a few years ago, during the economic downturn, we were given a statute that said that we had to have at least 3% in unassigned fund balance. And if we, if we went below 2%, we would have to submit information to Department of Education as to how we were gonna get back to that 3%. And there were a lot of districts that kind of got in, in trouble over that because of the economy downturn. Our auditors recommend between 5% and 7%, and our rating agencies, they recommend double digits, which is about 10% and higher. And, and these go to our financial stability. It goes to whether or not we are able to meet things that were unforeseen. So it's always important, and again, it shouldn't be used for recurring expenditures. There are several classifications on Slide 48. The first is non-spendable, so that is if we have inventory at the end of the year, because we have not distributed it, we have to record that as non-spendable. And also, we, we use that for prepaid. So if there's things we have to pay for before the year ends, we, we record that as a non-spendable. Restricted is what we call our categoricals. If we don't spend the dollars, they have to roll over. Committed was a new category, and you approved this Board policy that we have that talks about, we're committing these funds, and we're trying to set up a stabilization fund. And we may have to come back to you, depending on where we end up at the end of the fiscal year, asking to release some of those dollars that are in that committed category. And then Assigned, we set aside money. We know that sometimes there's errors in FTE, so we like to set aside money in the Assigned category so that we, we don't experience a drop in funding. And then, of course, the Unassigned category, which you talked about, the 3%. So you have a handout. It looks like this, a pie chart. It should be behind your Tab 6, and the reference should say Tab 3, Slide 49. Even though it says Actual Fund Balance, it's our estimated Actual Fund Balance. We believe that to be 92.2 million. Our Committed is right under 2% at 8.1 million. Our Restricted estimate is 21 million. So that's all those categories that, categorical dollars that were not spent. And then our inventory and, or non-spendable, we're estimating it to be 3.2 million of, of that. Our Assigned, so because our revenues for 2425 are less than our expenditures, we can assign a part of that fund balance to help shore up our revenues and expenditures. And then, of course, the 3% requirement and the remaining available. So we have a total estimated unassigned of 7.18%, which is to the tune of about $30 million. The little arrows look at Assigned and Unassigned. And those two indicate our financial condition ratio, and that's at about 14%, which is pretty much standard for most school districts. Some have higher. But we're doing okay. Remember, our fund balance is built up at the end of the year due to vacancies or other unspent dollars. But if those dollars are categoricals, we have to rebudget them in the next year. So we use that, those dollar amounts to, to shore up our next year. The next page behind that is looking at our budgeted fund balance for 2425. And our estimate right now is about 38.2 million, or 8.17%. As you can see, our Committed is right at 8.5 million. We do not record an estimate for Restricted or Categoricals. And then Non-Spendable, we have an estimate of $1 million. We're assigning, are estimating, are assigned at $2 million. And our FTE adjustments end up being between $1 and $2 million a year. So we set aside money for that. The Unassigned, which is a requirement of 3% plus the remaining, is a total of 5.71%, which is $26.7 million. So we're right in that category of where the auditors think we should be, between 5% and, and 7% in, in, for budgeted fund balance. The last sheet behind that gives you a picture. For the beginning of 2023, we began with $75.2 million in beginning fund balance. We estimated we were gonna have $418.3 million in revenue, 401 in expenditures, or this is the actual, I apologize. So this is where we got our estimated ending fund balance of 92.2 million. So that is our tentative actual for 2324, 92 million. And then the components are listed out in, on this particular sheet, which we just went over. And then below that, based on that beginning fund balance of 92.2 million, we're estimating our revenues to be 467 million, our expenditures to be 521, which will leave us at a $38.2 million ending fund balance projected for 2425. And the items below that pretty much tells you what makes up that fund balance. So a lot of times, we start out with this, between 34 and 38 million dollars in fund balance, but during the year, again, it gets built up based on hiring. So once we start hiring 100% of our teachers, we can't count on that filling the gap anymore. Are there any questions about fund balance?
Sure. So my question isn't about fund balance, it's about for the next time we have a meeting, I, I would have a request. If we could see a 10-year track of the percentage of fund balance that we began and ended the year. So I, I'm, I think maybe you understand my question, but when we're looking at historically, I know that we certainly had a significantly high start this year, you know, how we ended 22% or that, that's, you know, or even 14, that, those are really high numbers. I understand that's where our credit agencies, like, that's why we just increased our credit rating. But if we could see historically the last 10 years, because as you know, this is a hot topic for bargaining that continues to be, your fund balance is too high, or, well, we know the state says we have to have 3%, and then auditors say five to seven. And so kind of just give us that historical picture for the, maybe the last 10 years, maybe Board members would like to see a different number. But I think the last 10 years to give us an idea of where we've always been, because that also will help understand what our district's sweet spot has been, as opposed to potentially what could, I don't ever want to get in that scary spot, I can tell you that for sure. And I know we have been living off of our savings for a long time, in fund balance specifically. So just, again, projecting out, I would like to see historically, as we continue to project out what this looks like. And so, is that in, did I clarify my question enough? You know exactly what I'm asking for. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Where we estimate, where, versus where we ended up.
Yes, that.
And I guess I would add to that.
Yes, yes.
One of the components of that. So, you know, 150 unfilled vacancies.
Sure.
Or categoricals not spent. That's what's running through my mind, what caused it. Because remember, when we budget, we have to budget like people are coming to work... we have to budget like people are coming to work the first day, and they're going to work to the end. We budget as if everyone who submitted a budget that was approved, that they're going to spend all of those dollars. So I think we can provide where we estimated in the beginning and where we ended up. But I think there's another piece to that.
Sure.
Where, what happened.
Right. What, the justification as to why the number is what it is. But I definitely, yes. And have it as the percentage for us as well. Dollar amount and percentage, so that way... Because like I said, just because fiscal rating agencies want you to be in double digits doesn't mean that that's where Marion County Public Schools' sweet spot has always been. But we also haven't been in that 3% to 4% range where we're treading in really deep water either. So, yeah, thank you. That would be helpful, just for background.
So we're ready for Adult Ed? If you want to keep going?
Keep going.
Keep going, okay. So the Adult Education Program, I have to give them credit because there were a few years there where they were struggling for their revenues and expenditures. And they've really come full circle. So on Slide 52, you'll see that the Adult Ed program has $12.7 million. That includes a fund balance of $3.7 million. So, and as you know, most of their funding either comes from the workforce dollars, from the state, and of course, local dollars, which are the fees that the students pay. On Slide 53, this is just a summary of their revenues. And again, they predominantly receive funds from the workforce development allocation as well as local fees from students. Go on to... Okay, we'll look at Slide 54. Down at the bottom, where it says 3315 Workforce Development. As you can see, that dollar is, it's about $4.7 million. Usually about the same every year. And then, the local on 55, you'll see where the fees for our students total $3.7 million. So that's predominantly how they support those programs. On Slide 57, you'll see that the budgeted expenditures are $1.3 million more than the prior adopted budget. They do have some increases as they're reorganizing their staff and some decreases. On Slide 58, and you also have a handout that gives you more detail. And at the top, it says Adult Education, reference Tab 3, 58 through Pages 58 through 71. So that gives you a more detailed picture of their expenditures. But their salary budget was $4.4 million at the adopted budget and $4.3 million for tentative budget for next year. Again, you can use the handout that was provided. And on Slide 59, you see there's a slight change in the staffing that caused a reduction from budget to budget. Slide 60, benefits for Adult Ed program, $1.3 million. Pretty much the same for 2024 tentative budget. Mrs. Smallrich says that they're a lean machine and getting more lean as they get reorganized. Purchased services were $1 million for '23, '24, and a little over $1.4 million for tentative budget purchased services. Slide 63, I just want to point out, 3,600 object is rentals, but you know those are licenses. They're not really renting anything needed for the program. For energy, Slide 64, $560,000 for their energy costs. And they are projecting a reduction of $207,000 to $207,000. Again, we may not have their last bills in for utilities. I don't think we're getting any reduction in our rates for utilities anytime soon. On Slide 66, materials and supplies, $897,000 for '23, '24. The tentative budget for '24, '25 is $975,000. Pretty much consistent with what they have done over the past year. In capital, $157,000 for '23, '24, $1.2 million for '24, '25. That's Slide 68. What I would point out to you here under building and fixed equipment, that is, that has to do with the renovations that they're beginning to do for some of the programs that they have. Slide 70, the adopted budget for '23, '24, $357,000 for... And then, '24, '25, $680,000. So you know that on Slide 73, anything that is remaining has to be rolled over to the next year. So their program is self-supporting. They do also get additional federal grants to... And then, they got the appropriation last year, which was probably the first time that I remember in 30 years that we received an appropriation. And that's to your credit, which is really good for the Adult Ed program as it continues to expand. This is the last fund in general fund referendum. This is our one-mill at Valora property tax. So in November '22, the voters renewed this millage, extending its expiration date to June 2027. We always have that date in the back of our minds as well because we pay for a lot of staff out of referendum. The estimated allocation for '24, '25 is $37.3 million. And again, you can see all the different sources, excuse me, uses that we can do or use for this funding. I think we added Safe Schools the last time it was renewed, so two times before. And you'll see that these are changing. So Slide 77 provides the revenue sources, $49 million. And that includes a beginning fund balance of $11.8 million. We're all aware that we, because we don't start receiving proceeds until November, December, it's, we need to keep a fund balance to take us from July through November when we start receiving funding. So on Slide 78, it's just projecting the revenue that we'll receive, $37.3 million, which is a slight, or an increase of about 3.8% from budget to budget and 3 million from budget, from actual to tentative budget. So that is a part of the increase in the property value causes an increase in capital, an increase in the referendum. Let's look at the programs. On Slide 81, you can see that the majority of the funds are budgeted for class size, teachers, and paras. The next highest is Safe Schools as we continue to try to meet the requirements of the Marjory Stoneman Act. So let's go to Slide 82. We have 167 classroom teachers budgeted at $12.8 million, 179 paraprofessionals at $6 million. And now that we share the funds with charter schools for not only the 1.5 mil, but also referendum, they submit a budget and tell us how they're going to spend these dollars as long as it meets the criteria of the... We allow them to submit a budget for that. So the charter school distribution is about $74,000. Physical education for 23 PE teachers, $1.8 million. 26 PE techs, $1 million. Materials and supplies for the elementary schools, based on the number of students that they have. And then, of course, the charter school distribution of $200,000. So that's for physical education. And then, the vocational programs, $2.4 million. This funds 20 vocational teachers, some technology rentals, diesel fuel, and that's for field trips that are taken. Materials and supplies and a capital outlay equipment, $574,000. We mentioned before, referendum has helped the CTE programs because this equipment is very expensive. And so, here's another way we can continue to build that program and afford the necessary equipment.
Chair, I just have a quick question. Could you go back to the previous slide real quick on the charter school distribution?
Yes.
Can you speak towards how, if at all, school grade is tied to us having to give funding for charter school distribution?
The only thing that... Yes, the grade... Yes, if it's, if a...
You don't have to answer right now if you want to.
No, if a charter school has a grade, I believe, of an F, they, we cannot allocate the 1.5 mils, not the 1.5 mils, but the PICO dollars. Take that back. So school districts don't get PICO dollars anymore. It all goes to the charter schools. But one of the requirements for them to get those dollars is their grade has to be certain letter grade.
Okay.
And so, if it falls below that, they will not get the PICO allocation.
Do we get it?
We don't get it.
Oh, it just goes back to the state?
Yes.
So specifically speaking to this slide, then, the general fund expenditures and having to give money to the charter schools, if a charter school is failing, we still have to give them these funds?
Yes, yes, yes. We still have to provide for them the 1.5 mil part, the referendum, and their regular allocation.
And if a charter school were to close due to its poor performance, do they then have to pay us back the money? Or how does that work? Like, if we, are we front-loading all the money for the year? And then, if they close, let's just say theoretically, the money was mismanaged and there's not enough for the rest of the year, then how does that work with us getting that money back?
We have to provide them funding. So hypothetically, if they closed at the end of this month, we would not continue allocating them funding for anything.
Because we pay monthly to them?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not giving them...
Prepayment.
Prepayment, that's in excess of 30 days.
Right. If it's a prepayment, it's based on their estimated FTE.
Which some schools, we know, have inflated their estimated FTE for years on end now.
But we are trying to address that as well.
Okay.
Matter of fact, I had a conversation with Mr. Ayers yesterday about, we just need to look at the actual enrollment of all the schools. But apparently, in the contracts that we have with them, it allows them to provide a projection. But I think we need to go one more step and ask for justification.
Right, because if the projection's been 60 or 70 every year, and then we've started with 35 or 40, we obviously can see a historical trend in data that's supporting that those, that many students are not showing up on the first day.
Yeah. The charter schools are protected by the language in our contract as well as Florida statute. And I think somebody said...
Yeah, and I appreciate all of that. I just want to make sure that we're being physically responsible and not giving any access to a school that we... I know for me personally, there's one in particular that I have grave concerns about, and I have voiced his concerns publicly before. And so, them receiving a failing school grade now, I know that there will be conversations going forward about what that looks like. And I want to make sure that we're not providing any money that we won't be able to return if they were to no longer be in operation.
I think in their contract also, anything that they've purchased with these dollars has to be returned to the district. And we've gone through that with a charter school some years ago, where we, and we do inventory what they have as best as we can. But all of that gets turned back to the district. And we do pay them like the middle of the month, so the 15th of every month.
Okay.
For that month, for their regular FTE as well as referendum. And I believe we start with the 1.5 mil in November?
It's February.
February, so.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Ms. Boss, those...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. James, for that. That's a good questioning. I do remember when we, since I've been on the board, me and Ms. Thor, that we did have a charter school that closed. And all of that property did, we did recover that property. And what did we do with that? It came into our inventory, correct?
Yes. And if it was usable, it was surplus to other schools.
Right. Thanks.
Okay. I know it's tricky waters, so I don't want to rip Band-Aids off of wounds that aren't necessarily there yet. But I just, it triggered me to think about sending money there. And so, thank you.
We have, we have talked about it. And just really looking at projections versus actual. Because there are some, some of our charter schools, they project low. But in October, we write them. So if they projected, say, 100, and October count, they're double that, we do make an adjustment. So I think it would be appropriate to do it the other way around as well.
Okay, thank you.
I do, I wanted, but I think I want to wait till you get to Slide 90 to talk about the handouts that you gave us, so...
Okay.
But I definitely have a conversation starter for us, board, if you'll entertain it once we get there.
Right. Are you going to share the information that you shared with me the other day as well?
Yes, I just, I thank you for the handouts because I think it further enhances what I want to at least have a conversation about. Thank you.
So just to bring to your remembrance, all of these were programs, for the most part, that were cut during the recession. So if a school, just say a school had two PE teachers, and they went to one. We had art and music teachers who were sharing schools. So they would be at one school two days, another school three days. So the referendum restored that, so we didn't have to do that anymore. The media services, there, we're funding 16 media specialists and also additional library materials for our elementary schools. Art program, 17.5 art teachers, 12.5 art professionals. And I believe those were added about three or four years ago to assist the teachers and art teachers. We have .5 for coordinator who handles both the art and the music programs. And supplies, again, for our elementary students, schools based on the number of students they have. And the charter school distribution of $208. The music program, $2.2 million, 18 music teachers, 8.5 paraprofessionals, the other half of the coordinator. And then, also, boards, I believe, maybe eight years ago, wanted to supplement music programs, not only at elementary, but also at the high school. So there are funds for the middle and the high schools as well. And then, the charter school distribution of $110,000. Professional services, $777. We have the new teacher training program, paying supplements to our existing teachers. Our, we have the new teacher training program, paying supplements to our existing, uh, teachers, uh, that support that program. Uh, the supplies that are needed and of the charter school distribution is a hundred and forty-nine thousand. And then the safe schools, which has grown as we try to meet the criteria of the Marjory Stoneman Act. Uh, we have shifted, um, some of the resource costs to, uh, referendum to the tune of eight point eight million. Um, and then, of course, there's costs for our guardians and some security equipment to the tune of seven hundred and eighty thousand. Again, the security equipment, these are recurring costs. Um, and we, we look to, to replace that equipment at some school every year. And then, uh, the charter schools requested two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for safe schools. Let's see, we can go, okay, we're at slide ninety, did you want to?
Sure, so thank you for the handouts that we have here that shows the actual allocations of where these dollars are going. So it, it is no secret, and I have publicly said multiple times, that I, my hope for this millage referendum would be that we would not continue to fund recurring costs and some of these would be more short-term bursts and things that are equipment-based or, um, CTE program equipment-based, that sort of thing. So there's a couple of things on these slides that caused me significant pause, board, and I, I would like to have a conversation about it a bit. The first thing I'll highlight on the handouts that have the gray, orange, and blue colors on them. If we look at the teachers, first of all, the, for the general, uh, community to understand what we're looking at. Essentially, what this referendum has done is to enhance our elementary schools. And so we've never publicized it that way. We've never talked about that this referendum predominantly shores up elementary instruction. But if you look at allocations in our high school, middle school, they are very minimal. With the exception of obviously the safe schools, that we're putting some SRO dollars there and that sort of thing. But we've never promoted this as an elementary referendum. But when you really look at the allocations, that's essentially what it is. So I want to start with that thought process. The significant concern I have is over in the blue columns. If you'll see the schools that have the largest numbers of allocations for class size reductions. Those are the allocations that essentially are, the teacher allocations that essentially are going to fill these two new elementary schools that we have. So probably half, if not all, of the thirty extra teachers at Sunrise. The eleven extra teachers at Saddlewood, the sixteen extra teachers at Marion Oaks. If not all of those, at least a majority of them are going to be funding, are going to be moving to Elementary W and Elementary X. And if we, if we keep those teachers in referendum, then we're not fully staffing those school. Because the whole reason they're there for class size is because that, that's where the students are. So i- it causes me significant concern that we are using the referendum essentially to fund full teacher allocations for essentially our new schools. And that, that's really what this looks like right now. Understand, we're in twenty-four, twenty-five, I get it. But I, I'm forecasting to twenty-five, twenty-six and then potentially when this board asks in twenty-six. When this millage referendum is on another ballot, if that is what this board wants to do, what that looks like in the future. The other thing that I, I wasn't here when the, when the referendum was originally put into place. But I believe we promote this predominantly as a referendum for art, music, and PE. That's, that's really how it gained traction and then it evolved into safe schools and career tech. And, but originally, a lot of the talk was about restoring art, music, and PE.
Vocational was big too.
Vocational, in the very first, in the original, perfect, thank you. I, I think if we look though at the, the vocational, it has stayed the same as have art, music, and PE. And the class size reduction has continued to increase year over year over year. Whereas we continue to maintain art, music, PE at half here, half there. Um, and again, I, I think that the conversation about this being an elementary referendum is never really something we talk about. Because of the career tech piece, but really it's only funding twenty teachers for secondary. As opposed to four hundred plus that go to our elementary schools. So I just wanted to have a conversation, board. I don't know if this is something that you all have thought about at all. My original thought, I don't know that I'm fully going with my original thought, but, you know, when I went to Ms. Boston Ellis two days ago. I said, why are we not putting every one of our art teachers, every one of our music teacher, every one of our PE teachers in the referendum? Because that's essentially what it says that we're doing. I, I understand if we do that and the referendum did not get voted in, then we're really in a pickle because you really don't have even a half of a PE teacher to share with another school. I, I understand that, so I don't know that I'm fully in that same thought process. But I'm significantly concerned about how high the class size reduction number is when you consider what these allocations are. Because essentially, again, the majority of these, we're going to have to figure out anyway. And it makes me just sit here and say, what do other districts do when they don't have this referen-? How do they fund these additional units? How, how are they making it work? And, and we, you know, I don't know where the, the other dollars have gone. Uh, the last thing I'll say on that and then certainly, board, if there's any other thought on, on what my diatribe has been here. Uh, the, the only other thought that I, I wanted to, to say there is I know that some other districts have gone out for millages recently and they're, everybody uses their village differently. But as I said previously, even today, the amount of money we have is the amount of money we have. And this is something extra that our community has given us. And the way I see it is I don't know that we're treating it as an extra. Um, I know that there have been some recent referendums in other counties specifically tied to teacher salary increases or, or things like that, that it said, this goes away, this is essentially like a bonus. This is not a recurring cost essentially, we get it for four years and then it. Sorry, if it's not voted in, you don't get that extra salary increase the year over year. In turn, what we've done is we've put people. And if we don't have this referendum in the future, we don't have the teachers to put in these two new elementary schools. We don't, and we certainly don't have the art, music, and PE to be in each school. Uh, I don't, I don't know, I, I just had, this has really kind of been top of mind lately for me in particular. I'm, I'm interested in hearing if the board has any other thoughts on referendum. Uh, just because with us having a ballot initiative on the twenty-twenty-four ballot. It's causing people to already start talking about the twenty-twenty-six ballot. And so I think it's important that this board at least start considering what that looks like in the future. I think that will, my thoughts.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell, um, yes, let's hear from the board. I just have a clarifying thought based on what Dr. Campbell said. When we open up the two new elementary schools, the teachers are going to follow the students. The auxiliary staff is what will be extra. So eight, all of the administration, custodial, cafeteria, any facilities, individuals, all of that kind of stuff.
That is, that is correct.
The teacher follows the student. And so to Dr. Campbell's point, that primarily, the schools that we're going to be moving people from are listed here on the front page of this handout in the blue column. I think that would be a certainly a, a good start to a safe assertion. Now, there's going to be others that move because we're moving more than just the class size numbers. However, we won't be able to continue to pay for them from referendum because they will no longer be addressing class size. Because presumably, we will all be within class size. Is that a safe assertion?
You're asking me about that?
Uh, what?
Curriculum maybe?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, right now, they're, they're funded out of referendum because they are extra teachers to meet class size in an overfilled school. When we open a new school and take fifteen teachers from Sunrise and move them to Elementary W, W? They will then no longer be used to meet class size. Because we will be in class size because we won't have an overfull school. And you can tell me if I don't understand this correctly. But if we do that, which is I think what we are going to do. Then the teacher, the, the language of the referendum can no longer be applied to fund them. Because they won't be, they won't be reducing class size.
But, but the, the, I believe the way the language reads is just class size. I don't know that it's to reduce class size. So ultimately, we could put any teacher we wanted to there. Because i- if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Boston Ellis, we really could. I mean, we, we allocate them specifically based on the schools that are significantly overcrowded and understand that. But the way the language is, we could still continue.
Well, that's my first initial question to clarify.
I would think so, but I would, um, lean to attorney powers about the interpretation of, of what that is. But I think it is vague enough that we could continue to pay for those teachers. I, I just, I can't speak to that. At, at the time, it was, we were paying a penalty.
Right, yes.
Because back then, they charged a penalty if you didn't meet class size and you didn't come up with a plan.
Okay.
To do that. Um, but the penalty has gone away. Uh, but I believe the intent was to try to meet class size so we wouldn't be penalized. And then we would, um, lower the number of students in the, in the classroom, but.
Okay.
I don't know about the language.
Well, and we.
I would have assumed we would still.
Bring that back, I don't know that I need that answer today. My, that was my first though thought, as Dr. Campbell brought this forward, was will we have to move these people? Now, I would argue it's going to be a best practice. It, to move everyone who is not over, addressing and overcrowding into our regular fund. Because I absolutely agree, as much as we can move these reoccurring costs. Now, I'm going to preach kindergarten para until the day I die. I think me and Ms. Conrad are big advocates of a kindergarten para, I know that for sure. And so I, I will be a very vocal voice that I know that's reoccurring, but I kind of see that. Although I couldn't imagine being a district that bumps up people's pay and then takes it away if a referendum doesn't get approved. That sounds bananas, way worse to me than this. But I would rather say, no referendum, no kindergarten para, and continue to prioritize kindergarten paras in our, in our budget because that is so very important to me. But my goal would be that when we move, which should alleviate a lot of money in our referendum budget, Dr. Campbell, right? To then prioritize to a non-reoccurring cost if we're able to move these teachers into our traditional salary budget.
And why, sorry, can we have an open dialogue? Thank you, Chair. Um, while I completely agree with you, we don't have the money. So that, the point is, that I'm trying to say is, I completely agree that every teacher that goes to W and X need to come out of general fund and be funded there. But we don't have a funding source for that. So that's why I'm, if we pulled them from referendum, what are we replacing? And that was my original thought with Ms. Boston Ellis was, fully fund every, not just point five, but one PE teacher, one art teacher, one mu- music teacher from every school. Perhaps it's every para, perhaps it's, it, where we.
Oh, you're saying, oh, ebb and flow. You're saying move the teachers over but then fully fund some of the other things that would have to get cut if the referendum didn't get renewed.
Yes, that's my point.
Yes.
Say, if we're saying the referendum is for art, music, PE, CTE. If that's what we're saying, then let's put every one of those allocations in the referendum.
With the acknowledgement though, that we would still have to go back if the refer- because we still have to, we still have to have PE at a minimum. Like by state law. So we would have to still go back and find, we couldn't just cut all of those positions because we would have to still fund some of them.
Absolutely.
I'm on track with what Dr. Campbell's saying though. I get what you're saying and I would love to see the math behind what that switch would look like if we took those and moved them and then funded, would it wash itself? But I'm also going to say, I, I, I obviously do a budget on a much smaller scale for my business. But what I can tell you is, you just have to stop prioritizing certain things and prioritize other things. So we can afford these people, we may have to cut programs. We may have to cut these multiple millions of dollars of, of programs that we're, we're using for curriculum or, and I don't want to do that either. But the money, I mean, we got a big old budget, the money is there, it's about what we're prioritizing. So we're going to have to change what we're prioritizing, but we can continue to pay for the people if we start cutting the programs. I, would you agree with that?
I think we have a fairly large staff. And it's grown and it's grown based on what I understand is needs for the schools. About seventy percent of our budget is staff and benefits. So I, I think you, as a board, have been talking about priori- priorities.
Yeah.
For a long time. And, um, a couple of years ago, you may remember that you added staff. And, um, that concerned me because it was a reoccurring item. And we've changed the ratios, so in my opinion, from a numbers perspective, is we've got to go back and look at our allocations and again prioritize what we need, um, as a school district. Because we're still growing, so, you know, we get an increase of less than two percent in revenue. But we have costs that are way higher than that.
Yeah.
So it, it's, it's a balancing act, but we have to always keep in the back of our minds is seventy percent people.
Well, I'm, I just want to say I'm on track with Dr. Campbell and I would totally support the team bringing forward this worksheet reflective of basically fully funding all of the PE, art, music, and CTE. And then getting rid of the surplus teachers that we would be moving to general fund and just understanding if that would even work. Because I think that's a really, at least a strategic idea to address it right now. And then how, well, for next year. And then how could we, if we don't get the referendum again, then how, we would have that conversation then?
So based on, on her request, um, Thomas did a little quick, uh, analysis of those units and that's, um, I, I think what we did is took all elementary, uh, art, music, and PE teachers, put them in, uh, referendum. And we took the class size and put them in the general fund. Uh, we also put vocational, all vocational instructors in the, uh, referendum. And I think there ended up being about a seven million dollar difference. So, uh, the general fund picked up seven million dollars. Uh, so it, I mean, we can go back and play around with different scenarios if that would be helpful. But the bottom line is, in four years, we're still going to have to pick up additional salaries and benefits. But we can go back and do different scenarios if that's what you would like, um, for us to do. But doing that quick analysis that, um, Dr. Campbell requested, ended up being an additional seven million dollars, uh, to, uh, the general fund.
Okay, that, that was really all I, I mean, that, that sounds better than what I thought you were going to say, if I'm being honest, so. You're good, I'm good.
Just remember, they're all recurring costs and every year, you know, those costs go.
They go up, they go up, higher every year.
There was some discussion a few years ago about, you know, what are, what are we going to do? Uh, we need to move all the units to, uh, the general fund. But again, I think we've got to look at our staffing ratios, we've got to look at, uh, continue to look at other funding sources. Whereas grant supplement, not, not take the place of, but supplement what's going on in the general fund. But keeping in mind that we are continuing to grow. And, um, those are the, uh, pains that come along. When, when we built Legacy many years ago, I actually, Robin found an analysis that I'd done back then. And we actually tracked the teachers, um, curriculum told us what group of kids were going to Legacy. And other schools that were going to im- impact. And the greatest operational costs is, I believe, one of you stated, it was a principal at that school. AP deans, custodians, don't know the impact on transportation. But we did a similar analysis and back then, it was over two million dollars. And that was for one school, so I think we have to keep that in mind. Balancing growth, uh, that is occurring. So, but we can do some more analysis if you, if the board would like and see what happens. But again, we still will have this issue in four, two years. It's, we still have people there and I believe you said, Dr. Campbell, that other districts, they put. And I believe you said, Dr. Campbell, that other districts, they put bonuses for teachers. I've seen that. Technology, equipment, but that was not how ours was set up. Ours was set up to fill that gap that had occurred. So let us know what you would like.
And since I was asked, I'll give my brief input that.
Thank you.
Obviously, the first thing we have to, we've already done, which is allocating the funds. I had some notes that I had taken earlier on that. We have to show that we're spending the money on initiatives, reduce class size, like hiring support level staff and teachers. That's something that's been an ongoing process, and I think the district's done that. After that, we have to track our spending. We have to maintain the records of how those referendum funds are being spent, and that's also been something that's an ongoing process. We have to monitor that progress. District has to regularly assess that progress. It's kind of what we're, we, we do on a semi-annual basis as well. And then that's, that's collecting data on average class sizes, teacher-student ratios, student performance metrics. That's something that is baked into the way that we plan things here. And then the last two big items we have to do is we have to report to the public what we're doing, and then we have to conduct some sort of auditing process to make sure that's working out. I think that the district has been doing those, those things. And provided that that is what we've been doing, we need to continue to do that and increase it if we detect areas where we're weak or we're not doing everything we possibly could do. But the documentation, that's what it involves, is those, it's sort of a five-factor analysis, and we have to go through that. And, you know, whether we specifically highlight it down to those five, th, those are the core things we have to do. And I think sitting through these meetings that we do regularly, that's present and needs to continue.
And we also have the Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee, the ICROC, which has done a tremendous job with their oversight. And thank you for updating the, the bylaws during your time. As, as Chair Dr. Campbell received a comment the other day, you know, that they're, they're short, direct, and straightforward, so everybody knows, you know, the difference of, of what the role is of, of the ICROC. So Vice Chair, you had some comments?
I do, just a couple of brief things. It's just, I think, in the world of public education, most districts are facing these types of challenges. And as we look at, or I think about, the school environments that I've been in, and earlier, the word enhancement was used, you know, for these funds. And I would just caution, using the word enhancement, to me, things that we're doing the, with our referendum dollars are, are basic needs for a well-rounded student when you look at art, music, and PE. And I just want to bring that forward because there is a lot of conversation going on in the community, especially with the sales tax conversation coming forth. So I don't, I didn't want anybody to walk away with, you know, this glamorized picture of what, what's happening. Because what this referendum has allowed, in my opinion, is for us to have our children to have the opportunity that I had when I was in, in school. And yes, it does apply mostly to elementary schools. But when we say that's what we're funding, we're funding an art teacher, you know, so every student gets an opportunity to go to art. Every student gets an opportunity to go to music. And so I agree with what everyone's shared here today. I, I just think it's such a challenge that we're faced. And I think another challenge that nobody's really discussed is the needs of our students have changed. So we have more staff members. We've seen that particularly since COVID. But the needs for the students in our school is so different than what it was even 10 years ago. You know, just mental health, safe schools, all of these things are so different and so expensive, you know? But we, as public school, provide a lot of needs and resources for our community as a whole. And so I just wanted to say that. I'm very thankful for the referendum, and I understand getting, moving those reoccurring costs over into our general budget. And I look forward to seeing what that looks like and just acknowledging that this is a challenge for, for most districts. Public, public education covers a lot of ground and takes care of a lot of things for our children and families. So thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And yes, I'm just reflecting on the evolution of, of the funding referendum. I believe the first one we ran as part of my group, Marion's United for Public Education, was in, it was either 2010, 2010 or 2012. It was a half mil for capital and a half mil for operating. And we, we were late, you know, getting started, and it failed miserably. But that didn't deter us. We came back a couple of years later and went just with the one mil for operating. And it was for restoring art, music, PE.
Restoration.
Yes, the restoration. Because, and you know, again, we have so many new people to this area that have no idea what, what happened. When that was going on, we had laid off all of our first and second-year teachers. And that was before the, it wasn't S or the other funding, but it came too late.
It goes ARP.
Which one was it?
Called ARP.
AR, ARA.
ARA.
The ARA funds, the ARA funds. But it was too late, you know, and we had lost so many teachers. It was just crazy. And so thankfully, that passed, and we were able to begin to restore and begin to come out of the decimation of, of the Great Recession. And I think Vice Chair Conrad's points are, are very well taken because it was sort of, that was then and this is now. There was no particular school safety issues, not in the murderous state that we have to deal with now. Technology was just coming. It wasn't as, nearly as vast. I mean, we were still doing paper pencil FCAP.
Yeah.
You know? So as we've moved along, the ballot language changed for the, for the first renewal. You know, restoring that language was, was gone, and it was for the necessary operating expenses, including reading, PE, art, music, library, media, and vocational programs, meeting class size requirements, and retaining state-certified teachers and para-professionals. So my point to all this is that the historical references are really important for us to be sharing in, in the community is, as well. It's almost like we're at the point where this is a finite funding source to help fund an almost what feels like infinite need. You know, we haven't even mentioned the mental health needs of our kids. I believe Marion County is right at the top for having such a need. And then I was thinking back, when I first got on the school board, we made that big investment in our buses. Now, I know that comes from a different funding source, but, but there's only so much money, you know, to, to go around. So priorities have changed. Expenses have certainly increased. It certainly seems like the network of support that kids seem to need and that society seems to be relying on and expecting, public schools to, yes, to, to do, has increased exponentially, including monthly trunsee court, you know? Trying to get them in the, in the beginning and also at, at, at the end. And, you know, you can't squeeze blood out of a turnip. I know that's a really old term. You know, there's only so much money to go around, and as taxpayers, you know, we think in our own households, well, we have to live within our means, or find a job that makes us more money, or take a loan out, which is what we're doing to, to build these schools. So there's a, a lot of conversation that's going to need to occur between now and if we do ask for, for another renewal, and what that language really needs to look like, and how we share with the public, you know, what has changed. Because back then, it was truly an emergency. Nobody wanted to keep living like that.
And nobody wanted to work under those, I mean, it was, it was a very difficult time to be teaching at that time because you went from teaching your regular class to going over and teaching something else, you know, during your 30-minute.
You were doing PE too, right?
Yes, you were teaching PE, yeah. So it, it was a really challenging time.
Yes. And again, you know, the requirements are different now. You know, in, in the old days, everything wasn't as prescribed, and how many minutes of recess, and how many minutes of PE, and, and all of those things that, that we have to adhere to. So it's, it's a really interesting conversation. It makes me uncomfortable to know that these needs that the referendum are paying for, I don't foresee going away. So how do we pay for them without having that funding source? Where do we find a stable source of recurring funding to pay for what we know we need, especially with the mandate that we really have from the community for career and technical education? Well, I'm pretty sure an airplane and simulator and everything else that we're doing, you know, to, and all these great partnerships. And, and I will say that, too, that we have created so many wonderful partnerships in the last few years. You know, the hospital district and, you know, money flowing in to, to help offset, you know, some of these costs. And, and I don't see those as enhancements. I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, but I believe our task is to prepare kids to be.
Their necessities.
Yeah, to be ready for the, to take their next step, you know? So it's, yeah, we, we have a lot to discuss. We have a lot to share with the community. I think that histor, history, you know, what do they say, you're doomed to repeat it, if you don't know it? Might be a good time to trot that out. Board member Campbell.
Sure. Thank you certainly for the feedback. I, I used the word enhancement, and I probably misspoke in that terminology. Essentially, what I meant to say was, well-rounded kids need art, music, and PE, and so why don't we fully fund art, music, and PE out of the referendum?
There you go.
That, that's essentially my, my conversation here. Appreciate the preliminary calculations that have been done. I would still advocate, even in this budget year, and I know that this is tight, I'm sorry, but even in this budget year, that we look to move as many of those art, music, PE, teach all of that into the referendum. Not every single class size reduction teacher, because I, I'm not trying to move everybody into the general fund, I'm not. But what it would do, I'm looking specifically at slide 81, and this is the one that continues to cause me pause every time, board. Because again, while we talk about class size as a part of the referendum, if we allocate these dollars differently, these columns look more equal. And it starts showing that the majority of our PE, majority, that the, that it's not all this far-left column, that we move several million dollars out of that far-left column, and all of these others start being moved. I would even advocate, and I know it's a really sticky conversation because of how much media specialists are written into the state statute now and what they have to be responsible for, but even moving all of them, not just .5 of one. And certainly, I, I can go either way, and I, but I, I think the board understands what at least my request has been. It, it would be a lot of work, I understand, to move all of those into referendum. But I, I think that becomes the real conversation then. For everything our students need, we have to have this, but it's not just funding a portion of what they need, it's funding all of what they need. And, and a significant amount of that is in elementary school, where we really get their attention, we get them on track. Kindergarten readiness is something that we've done such a huge focus to. So kindergarten paras potentially all need to be in referendum. And that's something that this board has done. I believe the language is enough that we could move all of the kindergarten paras into the referendum. So I, maybe, maybe I'm wrong on that. That's an attorney powers question, but, and maybe they're all already there.
Yes, they're already.
Perfect.
That's what I thought.
Referendum.
Okay, perfect. So that, again, that's a board initiative that this board is adamant about, but future boards may not be, and that is a, a piece to this referendum that doesn't always have to be the way that it is. So anyway, I just, I would advocate, not for next year, but even for this year, to consider going ahead and saying all PE, all art, all music teachers, even all media specialists, if the board so fit, all CTE teachers, all of them are funded out of this referendum. And we also have a few that are helping us with class size. So that prepares us for next year on that significant number of teachers that will be moving out of this to fund W and X. So we're already in that thought process. But that, again, is up to the board. I feel like I have at least some of you saying, yeah, that sounds like a good idea, but I.
I do, and I think, I think it also helps us paint a really clear picture. When you are out talking within the community, you find out, is this, is this a priority for you? I feel like it's a priority. But does our community feel it is as big a priority as this board does? Because I think traditionally, this board has been passionate about, we, we call them specials, but you know, art, music, PE, computer, all of those things. And so I do think it helps us create a better picture, a clearer picture.
I'm sorry, I was going to, I just have a, is that even feasible for you to do before the timeline of this being due?
I mean, it is feasible, it's just going to require a lot of work, but maybe you missed it, that there would be an additional $9 million on the general fund. And so it's not an equal swap.
And, and is, I'm sorry, is that if we completely reduce down all of these and move them all to general fund, it, whereas that?
No, that was moving the class size teachers.
Right.
To the general fund.
Sure.
But moving all elementary art, music, PE, all vocational teachers. Am I missing something, Thomas? I think that was, and media, moving all of them to the referendum. So I think you were thinking it would be an equal swap.
I didn't.
Well, I think what Dr. Campbell's asking for, for this year, is to still balance the budget with the number you have. Keep whatever class size reduction teachers need to be kept in, in referendum, and then move over as much as possible of, like, all of music, all of art, maybe, and then just start trying to complete that so that it, it takes steps to get more pure.
Yes.
During the budget year, that's what you're saying.
Yes. Yeah, I, I didn't anticipate that it would be an even swap. I really didn't. I knew there would still be some people in that far-left column, but I anticipated that the columns would actually look like this, as opposed to this and this. So if, if we are able to do that this budget year, then it gives us a really clear picture of, of what we're going to lose if we don't have the referendum.
So can, this consensus of the board, and can I make sure that it's neutral? That we're not charging additional money to the general fund?
Correct.
Yes, that's what I'm.
Yes, that's what I think, that's what I'm hearing is the request, is just to try to make the referendum look as pure as possible for what it is intended truly to do, which is art, music, PE, vocational, media specialists.
Okay.
And just wash it as best we can this year. And then as we approach the budget in a year from now, really trying to figure out how we can find that extra money and move it around to make the referendum completely pure and representative of what this board's desire is. Because I think we've made some really valid points today. In two years from now, there are three board members that are up for reelection. So the board, and if the referendum is renewed, it could all look very different in, in two years, and that board should then be able to prioritize what they think the community needs then. And if we have all of these teachers that are basic instructional units in here, it makes it a lot more complicated. I mean, it's all very complicated, but I think it's even more complicated when it's a fourth-grade teacher for, for class size.
I, I think for me, excuse me, I think for me, it gives a truer narrative of what we'll be conveying to the community, or what we are conveying to the community in reference to the referendum, because it's, it, it's kind of murky right now. I think there's going to be, as it's not going to be a dollar-for-dollar swap, we know that, but at some point, we got to make it clear.
There's, yes, there's, because we're looking at total budgeted expenditures, you know, of over 40 million. Every single category on here is appropriate. I want to start by saying that, that how it's allocated, how they are allocated is, you know, for the, for the board to determine based on the recommendations of, of our budget and, and what's going on. for the board to determine based on the recommendations of our budget and what's going on. Safe schools was a big element in renewing this referendum. And it does seem like it would be the public's preference, you know, to ensure that we're really prioritizing that. And technology is just moving so quickly in terms of making our schools safer too. And when technology moves quickly, then things become outdated and then it becomes more expensive. So this is what I mean for the infinite need with a finite ability to pay for it. So yes, I would be interested in seeing what you would propose. I think it's important because I don't see the need going away. I would love to be able to say that I do, you know? We still would like to be paying everybody more money because everything costs more now. Look at what things cost back in 2012 or 14, the first time this passed, compared to now.
For me, and you guys kind of said a little bit, I just don't want them to think that the art and the music and the media services aren't.
Expendable.
They're not electives, they are necessary.
Right.
Absolutely.
They're necessary for that group of children.
And I think that this conversation further enhances how necessary. And it will show the community, we believe they're so necessary that without this funding source, they will not be, I mean, it'll be a really challenging.
And the vocational.
Oh, absolutely, vocational as well.
Yes.
As well.
Yeah, the CTE, I mean, thank goodness for that appropriation, but all the equipment that we have to put in that building, you know, money has to come from somewhere. We want to stand and you want to sit.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, I think we were getting close to the, yes, go ahead.
Ms. Boston Ellis, this might be on here. We have a lot of paper in front of me and a lot of information. So I just, looking at the safe schools on slide 89, the purchase of school resource officers, I did not see that on our funded units.
Oh, they're not our employees?
Okay, so it's separate.
So it would be like 3,100?
Because we pay out for that. I would, I would be interested in just a similar list like you've done for all of the other units. If we could have one to see, it's great for community conversation, you know, what that's paying for and where they're at.
Okay, so the SROs that are paid out of referendum, I asked Ms. Sherri Simmons, and she says it's approximately 47. And I know we will be adding a few more. I believe Westport's gonna get another one. MTI, is it Horizon? If they don't, Horizon. So it'll be up to 50. It'll be 50. We did have that discussion this morning because I looked at professional services and I thought. And then down in other purchase services on slide 91, their budget for 2425 is 5.6 million. And in that number is a charter school allocation for referendum and about 4.8 million dollars for additional safety expenditures. And if I should be quiet, somebody tell me it has to do with the camera system in the buses and then some other items, radio frequency BDAs. So that's in there as well. So safe schools funding has gone up. I always say when Dr. Gullett got here, she was like, what are y'all doing?
So if we thought.
Yeah, we.
Which is really great.
Those did increase quite a bit.
And the pace, the pace of getting that.
So we'll bring back some scenarios to you, different. What I had asked staff to do was just look at every one of those areas that Dr. Campbell mentioned. What would it cost to move class size to general fund? What would it cost to bring all media in general fund to referendum? So I think we can expand on that since I'm sensing that that's something you want to look at next week.
Yes.
Yes, I think it'd be worth our conversation, personally.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, thank you for bringing that up.
If it's within reach. I mean, I don't want, I realize today is Thursday, and so again, we're meeting in like five days, but today is gone, today doesn't count, because by the time we get done with this. And so I just, I want to acknowledge that I'm sure we all agree, like, if this is a really heavy load, I can certainly offer grace in it not be a priority if it's completely out of, if it's completely out of reach.
I would say we could bring you some different estimates. Like I said, standalone and see. So you have something in writing, or we could email it to you, whatever you choose. Thomas is pretty quick, so we can.
If you have my head of time, you could email them to us and then we'd be ready to have a more.
To have a conversation, okay.
Yeah. How about we take a 10-minute break? And then we finish this up, is that okay? The board would like to take, the board chair would like to take a break. You can decipher that code. So we'll go ahead and take a 10-minute break at 11:30 to 5:00. Thanks. We are back from our work session recess at 11:42 a.m. Continuing with the budget. And Ms. Boston Ellis.
Okay, we're on slide 92, and we're still talking about referendum. And the energy services that you see are related to field trips, I think predominantly for the CTE programs. We can move on to slide 94, which is the capital outlay. Not very much going on there. Again, 6,400 is really furniture and equipment. And this has to do with cameras and the other equipment, door buzzers that we are purchasing. There is nothing funded for cameras yet. They typically come back and amend that amount in, or either it was carryover from the prior year. 277,000 actual expenditures for vehicles other than buses. I believe those were the Safe School vehicles that were purchased. Other expenses and transfers are pretty much dues and fees and some small miscellaneous expenditures. I'll move on to slide 97. This is giving you a picture of the referendum ending fund balance. As you can see, it typically has grown for the 24-25 year. We are estimating that we'll end up at about 8.4 million, and that should carry us through July through November until we get the tax proceeds to begin funding the rest of the programs. Well, I always like to include a little additional historical data. We talk about the history of the lottery funds, and we'll just go back to 2014. You can see the discretionary lottery in 2014 was a small dollar amount. The remaining funds were used to pay for schools. It was the school recognition dollars, and those were schools that had maintained an A, or they had increased their grade by one letter. The 21-22 year, we did not have school recognition funds due to COVID. And I believe the reassessment of students, 23, 2023, we received a little under 700,000. And this past year, we received 1.62 million. Those dollars go directly to the schools, and they determine how they're going to spend them for bonuses, equipment and such. And they have to vote on it. And this year was no different than the other years. And then the teacher supply funds, you may recall it's had several different names, but this was also rolled into the BSA, and we were encouraged to provide $300 for each one of our teachers. The two gray lines at the end or the bars at the end indicate those years that these dollars were rolled into the BSA. Thomas just paid out the first wave of teachers that met the criteria a couple of weeks ago. You may remember that we use Class Wallet so that the teachers can, they have more spending ability, more different stores. And any unspent money at the end of the year, that money is turned over to the SAC at the schools. Now we're ready for...
You did it.
Yeah. There's not a whole lot to add, Ms. Boston Ellis. So I just, again, just truly thank you to you and your entire team. Many of them are sitting here today. There's a lot of work, as I said in the beginning, that goes into this. I think the board really understands and knows that, and so does the community. So thank you for your diligence, your efficiency, and your commitment to, you know, conservative spending and flexibility as well. So greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Just across the board, very grateful that, well, I know I don't look good in stripes, and I feel very confident that you are definitely keeping us from getting into any shenanigans, and that's so important. It's our whole credibility, you know, spending the taxpayers' money as wisely as we can and prioritizing the students every step of the way. So thank you, as always.
Thank you for your questions and your attentiveness. Not the most thought-provoking conversation, but...
Oh, no. Yeah, we think it pretty hard.
We enjoy it.
It is. It is. Well, you're appreciated. Right. Is there any public comment? All right, hearing none. We will move on with a few upcoming meeting reminders. The next school board meeting is scheduled for the day after school starts, and that's August 13th, 2024 at 5:30 p.m. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for August 15th, 2024 at 9 a.m. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for August 22nd, 2024 at 9 a.m. And the following school board meeting is scheduled for August 27th, 2024 at 5:30 p.m. So we'll move on to everyone's reports and concerns. We'll start with Ms. Martinez. Anything from your seat?
No, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything from Legal?
Nothing from Legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Gullett.
I just have to say again, I'm looking forward to the students coming back Monday, the rest, and that's it. Thank you.
Yep, we're in the home stretch now. All right, Board Member Campbell, anything?
The only thing I wanted to mention, I know we kind of alluded to the sales tax on the ballot in November. Wanted to say kudos to the team for the new webpage that's up on our district website that details information about that half-cent sales tax, including a video and some other things. So just grateful for that as a resource for our community. If they have additional questions, they can go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member James?
Not much. Grateful for the team. This was an extensive conversation, and I'm always grateful for what you guys do because this is not my strength at all. I am super excited for school to start back for the rest of our schools on Monday. We have orientations mostly today and tomorrow. I know I have a day full of orientations tomorrow personally for my kids. And everyone remember that car line is really long the first two weeks of school. So when the car line is really long next week, it's because it's new for a lot of people. Some people maybe have never been to the school before. When they drive the wrong direction, offer them grace because maybe it's their first time. And probably by September 1st, after Labor Day, it will be no big deal. So thank you. I am hopeful that some of our construction projects around our communities are going to be wrapping up in this next week on the roadways specifically. I know we've had lots of the community, county commission and city have been working on a variety of projects to help with our traffic flow. But we do have some, I mean, I'm thinking specifically of right here at 441 and 40, that turn lane that has been not a turn lane really for what feels like an eternity that project has been happening. I have asked some questions about whether that's going to be flowing or not because we do know that the traffic flow, once school starts, always picks up. So just everyone try and offer some grace. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Board Member James. Board Member Cummings?
Yes, ma'am. I'm glad to be back, to be honest with you, seeing all you guys. It seems like it's been a long time. Yeah, a lot of things have been going on this summer. One, tell Ms. Boston Ellis and the team, thank you all. Thank you all for that very in-depth presentation this morning. I apologize that we didn't get you a chair earlier because you went through it, you went through it and given us all this information. There were some very important conversations that we had, and thank you. Thank you for that. I think it's going to help us to make better decisions and great decisions when it comes to how we spend money and how we allocate units and put people in places. I do want to say welcome back to all of our staff. They, I think they started, most of them started this week, except not, they will be either today or tomorrow. Had the opportunity to go over to MTI on Forest, MTI on Monday, I'm sorry, Forest on Monday for the Transportation Department when they came back, and it was good to see all of them as well. And I know that we've had folk coming in periodically throughout the week, getting ready for next week. So we're expecting next week to be a good week, a very good week. But as Dr. James just said, I'm asking our parents and everyone to extend a little grace because the first day of school, the first week of school, first month of school can be challenging. So please extend some grace, be patient. Parents, if you haven't got your kids registered, please get them registered and enrolled in school as soon as possible. We want to start the school year off right, and just expecting some great things. There was, there was one other thing that I wanted to bring up. A couple, a couple of weeks ago, a few meetings ago, we talked about, because I've gotten some phone calls, the addition of the Wing at Liberty Middle School. We kind of did something with it because we weren't in agreement on some things, but doing some digging into it, there's a potential that we could possibly lose some money because we're not moving on this thing with this contractor. If I'm not mistaken, I think it's about $150,000 that we're on the land for. Am I saying that right, Ms., am I close to it, Ms. Dobbins? I'm glad you're here. Because the GMP is not necessarily going up, but we did do a contract with these, this company, correct?
So yes, we did board approve the contract with WellPro back in February. So when we approve a contract, we approve a pre-construction fee, and that gives the money for them to put in all the hours and research into developing the GMP. So that was $40,000 that we would automatically owe WellPro for that work they've already done, regardless of the direction we go. The other piece to that is we know that as of today, the materials cost since June 11th of that board meeting has increased 30,000. So we're looking at 70,000 right now. Well, I don't want to misrepresent that. 40,000 we already have to pay, but now we're looking at another 30,000 increase in the GMP, which would be handled in the contingency piece to that GMP. So in other words, we're not increasing the GMP at this point, but our deductive change order that comes at the end of a project, we've already lost 30,000.
So, so Madam Chair, I'm asking that we bring that back to the board for that August 13th meeting. I think that's, Liberty is one of my schools, that's one of the schools that needs, that's overcrowded, and we need to make sure that we're doing what we can to make sure that they're prepared for the future. So we can bring that back.
Thank you for that recommendation. Board Member Cummings said, you know, I couldn't make it because I wasn't on the prevailing side, so I continue to agree that that's important to prioritize and get it moving. So the rest of the board, do we need consensus? And if we have it, let's do it, August 13th.
What's, what document is being uploaded? Because that's, we've already published that meeting, and proper, proper publishing would have been on Tuesday, the 6th.
Which would have been...
So...
And we want to stay within the realm of that, and we also want to get this going. So what are our options?
Chair can approve it.
Yeah, the chair can approve it. And we have consensus.
I just wanted to confirm that, but again, I was on the, on the different side of this vote, so I definitely want to make it priority. I wanted to make it one then, and I want to make it one now.
We're publicly noticing it now in an open meeting. The board chair has discretion to add it to the agenda as an added item.
I give my permission and approval.
We'll add that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Vice Chair Conrad?
Yes, I just wanted to give a shout out. We had a pop and drop here last night for our teachers. It was really a lot of fun, and I hope that it is, is an event that grows and more in our staff, more of our staff attend because it really was a fun time. There was food and a lot of prizes. A lot of our staff showed up, and it was just really great, a lot of fun. We actually got to see Dr. Brewer do a little dance, so that was good. So had a good time. And then also today, the Public Ed Foundation has a pop and drop for Tools for Teachers. So I believe all of those times are scheduled, but we do have a lot of school supplies that are being picked up by teachers at the drive-through over across from Madison Street. So excited for that, the opportunity for our teachers, because I remember my first year teaching, and I walked into, it was at Evergreen, and I walked into an empty classroom with just tables and chairs. And so it's just really a great service that we provide for our students. Wanted to thank the board for your participation on Sunday for our prayer walk at 42 schools. I received several sweet notes from administrators and deans and teachers just about how much they appreciated us taking time to pray over their staff and their campus and their students. And so thank you for taking time out of your weekend to join me with that. And Ms. Boston Ellis, you and your team, thank you again. It is so, so much information. And so, and I too, I agree with Reverend Cummings. I'm, I'm sorry that you had to stand for so long. I will be more mindful the next time that we have a long presentation like that. So thank you to you and your team and the work that you do every day to keep us on the straight and narrow. We sure do appreciate you. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I want to start by congratulating Wyamina Park Elementary School. For the past couple of days, they've been right there at almost 94% attendance, and it's, I've watched it, you know, continue to increase week by week. So Principal Hunt and your team and everyone that is lifting Wyamina Park up, which is all of us, congratulations. And as far as any additional support that is needed, especially with the dressing, and it's not just this school, too many schools have too many tardies. And we really don't have statute to support us when it comes to that. But we all know, missing just a few minutes of instruction every day, being late, what that, how much it puts a child behind. So we, we need to focus on that and target, you know, where these tardies are coming from. I know at Fort King, a lot of it is our walkers. You know, they just need to put some pep in their step and leave a little earlier. And we get out there and encourage them on our bicycles and do the talkies and encourage them that way, and they get a kick out of that, and that helped. You know, every school's different. But being on time, I think the old adage is it's better to be five minutes early than one minute late, and we want to continue to instill that in our students. But congratulations again to Wyamina Park. You're just off to a really great and positive start. It's a lot of fun to watch that. And then the other thing is, is yes, with the beginning of the start of school and just as crowded as our roads are and, and, you know, people are just under a lot of pressure these days. They're trying to get everywhere and trying to be on time, hopefully, but we're going to have a lot of buses on the road. We're going to have a lot of kids at bus stops. We're going to have kids at bus stops early in the morning, you know. Please, please, please. Several board members have already said this. Grace and compassion. Let's start this year with grace and compassion. And Vice Chair Conrad, for the second year in a row, you've taken the lead on that with the prayer walks over the schools, having 42 schools participate. I don't know of any other district that does that, you know? And, and the community, whether, it doesn't even matter what your faith is, it's the intention, and it is pure, as pure as it can possibly be. So I hope that that can extend to our roadways, our bus loops, just in our interactions with each other, because who's watching? Our kids. And we want to set the best example we can for them, always. So I can't wait for school to start either. It's like, enough prep already. You know, let's just have the first day and, and make it great. So thank you to everybody for today and for always. And if there's...
Madam Chair, excuse me. One quick question, clarification on the topic for Ms. Dobbins. Do you want that uploaded in the discussion portion of the agenda or the consent?
Or the...
The topic that Ms. Dobbins will be adding to the August 13th. Where would you like that placed?
Yeah, we can put it under discussion. That's fine.
Under discussion. Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else? We're good, we're good. All right, we shall close this meeting at 12:02 p.m. Thank you all. Have a great rest of the day.